Please stand for the Pledge Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. Had a nice week last week, a rainy, yeah, yesterday was rainy. And they're saying it's gonna be a nice week this week. So hopefully the wire will drop some more. Roll call, please.
Sandy Kufel.
Here.
Krista Regan.
Here.
Kristy Heltman.
Here.
Artie Bryson.
Here.
Cindy Valentine, here.
Mark Burchard.
Yes.
Joanne Shurkey.
Here.
Okay, we're all here. If you're watching on TV, there's Joanne sitting over there. I don't know if you can see her, but she's waving to you. And, okay, first thing we have on the agenda, we have a couple of public hearings scheduled. I'll open them up together. I'll make a motion that we open up for public hearing the Bull regard Drive and Bruckner's Island Private Road Maintenance.
At 7:01.
At 7:01. Precisely. We have motion and support. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, I'd like to say that both public hearings are open at this time. We did receive on the Bull regard Special Assessment. We received a notice today, I'd like to object and protest the Special Assessment for Bull regard Road, Harsons Island, Michigan, Ryan Wild, 2418 South Channel, Harsons Island, Michigan. And that's all it says. And Sherri did check the rules and he did vote no for it. So that doesn't change the ratio. I think we're in the ninety-four percent that wanted Bull regard Special Assessment, so just want to bring that to attention.
So we don't know if he's out of hardship or anything like that?
No, I don't believe that's the case.
Is he paying taxes?
Yes. So. But anyhow, is there any other public comments on either Bull regard or Bruckner's Island Road Maintenance? For all those people who are watching on Bruckner's Island, I talked to Mike and we talked to the Road Commission yet about Okay, the circle area right between the private or the bridges that go to Bruckner's, I make that a no parking tollway zone instead, no parking. That's actually township property right there, just past Middle Channel Marina, the old Minnix.
Have we calculated what the cost per resident is going to
Yeah, it's in the resolution and it's also, they know it, that's what they agreed to. Bruckner. Yeah, a hundred dollars per parcel per year. Flat fee. For five years. Okay, any, any, any public comments for either one? Not hearing it, or I'll make the motion that we close the Bull regard Drive and Bruckner's Island Private Road Maintenance Public Hearing. I have support. I have support.
Seven oh four.
At seven oh four. I have a motion supporting discussion. Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, anyone object? Okay, at this moment, I'll close the public hearing for those two. And we'll move right along to Bill's Payable.
I'll make a motion for Bill's payable in the amount of one hundred ninety-three thousand, two hundred and five dollars and fifteen cents.
Okay, motion support. Any discussion?
The Saul Grant for Project Controlled Engineering.
Yeah.
Does that satisfy up to date?
Yeah, we're gonna talk to it. We've had two draws, but well, it's actually an agenda item. Okay, we're gonna be all up to speed on that shortly. Any other comments on the, or questions on the Bill's payable?
Russell Island Trash Hall, I thought we were done with the outer islands or
No, that's different. That's for the Russell Island itself. We have to pay for a barge to bring their trash over.
Do we charge the Russell Island
Yes.
Property owners?
Yes. Part of the deal. And, yeah, First Marine's been doing that for the past couple, three years. Been doing a pretty good job at it. Any, any other questions? Now roll call vote, please.
Krista Regan.
Yes.
Kristy Heltman.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Joanne Shurkey.
Yes.
Mark Burchard.
Yes.
Sandy Kufel.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Next, Supervisor's Report. Here you didn't have one of these on that short meeting last time, huh? We'll make up for lost. All right, high water. Current status, the water is falling, which is a good, good thing. Checked it today, it's holding around five seventy-seven point three, five seventy-seven point three feet above sea level, which is about six, seven inches lower than it was two meetings ago, a month ago. And the Corps of Engineers is saying that it will drop another five inches by the end of October. So that's super good news. Hoping for a dry fall and the downward trend will keep on going. Another foot, foot and a half would be awesome. I'll be doing a happy dance, that's for sure. Our COVID report, it's been busy past a day or two. When I wrote this, I basically said no, and said no news is good news. We did have a possible exposure in the Water Department where the employee was quarantined and then after two negative tests that were received, then he came back, you know, for work as normal. What happened, one employee never had any symptoms, but he was, he was exposed to it by someone that was tested positive. And we did the right thing, gave him a test and right away when he came back, it was negative, the CDC recommends another test, I think it was five, six days after the exposure which happened and they were both negative, so it was, everything was good there. We did get a complaint from my OSHA and the St. Clair County Health Department, someone complained that they didn't think we were being real prudent as far as protecting ourselves from COVID in the office and we are, we actually did distribute masks for the employees, better masks, different masks than the normal paper ones. And we cut down reasons for people to come in the office. We have a new drop box right outside the door for ballots, for voting, for just about anything. And we really are cutting down the reason for, for any reason for anybody to come into the into the office for, to do any type of business. And so really, there's not a really big reason for people to come in. I mean, we're still getting a lot of foot traffic and I know for the absentee ballots and questions and things like that. Did we get our online thing fixed?
Yes.
Okay, we did have a glitch for about a week, maybe a week?
Wednesday, last Wednesday afternoon it started.
Last Wednesday afternoon until now, for doing our payment online for our water bills and our taxes. There was a computer glitch and that was fixed today. So, sorry for any inconvenience that might have caused. I came in this morning, I heard a lot of chatter about oh, COVID spikes in our area, in the county, in the schools. I called up Al Latose, the superintendent, I said, hey, Al, what's going on? He said he, he had, the school has two confirmed cases, positive cases. And both of those actually contracted the COVID from home, not, they didn't get it at school. Their both, their, their parents were tested positive and the two of the kids were. But they are taking precautions. He's quarant, they're quarantining anybody that sat near them or was in contact with these two kids. So there's about twenty-some people that right now are in quarantine and being tested and basically the same process probably that our water, water employee went through. So that's not as bad as I first heard. I did talk to our St. Clair County Emergency Manager today. I wanted to find out how many active cases we have in our township and the area, including Algenack. And he couldn't give me the, a number, but he told me there is ninety active cases in the whole county. I think we have a hundred and sixty thousand people, so ninety, that's what, three quarters of a percent? Chris, you're the math guy. Something like that, so it's not, and, and, and don't get me wrong, it is on the uptick. I think the county about a week ago, week and a half ago, was about forty cases, so it, it, it's doubled, but and we, we all kind of knew that, you know, we were gonna get a uptick. When we, people move inside as school starts and that type of thing. But, you know, I heard a lot of, a lot of scary stories about it this weekend and most of them aren't true. So going forward with that. We're actually doing our annual audit right now. I know these two are going crazy with it and me a little bit, but not so much as you guys. It's a lot of work. And they, and it's, it's being done remotely, so it's more of a challenge. It's, it's just a longer, slower process than if they were actually here, but they are coming Thursday, aren't they, for the one day? So that's been going on. If you didn't see the Road Commission, they paved Lake Point Drive and Muskrat Run last September seventeenth and eighteenth. I think they did a pretty good job on it. As far as the building, the safety issue on Nook Road was taken care of by the property owners. That we, we, we had two court cases, went to court and got a consent judgment on both, both cases. So the township didn't have to take further action on Nook. On Field Road, it's being cleaned up. Township hired a contractor and it's a lot better than it was. He's probably about eighty percent done right now and will be finishing up here in the next few days. And so that will be taken care of. We closed the splash pad for obvious reasons. Uh, let's see. And I'm told the county's going to allow us to sell dog licenses again in the, in our office. When does that start?
Pretty soon.
Pretty soon. Soon as we get them, huh?
Well, we might have gotten them today.
Okay, pretty soon.
Pretty soon.
We're, we're gonna be selling dog licenses, because before you had to either go all the way up to the county clerk, county or do it online. And I'm glad they're allowing us to do it again. It was a
What's, what's the cost?
What's the cost for
I don't have any idea off the top of my
I think it's around fourteen bucks.
Yeah.
What's the cost for a
A one year and a three year.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure.
I'll go online and find out.
Yeah, there you go.
You could even look on the door when you walk out. We have it on the
Oh, do you?
Yeah. Got the door, see, observe it on my smartphone. I don't know why fourteen bucks sticks in my head, but
Would you say for one year or three years?
One and three. You can do a one or a three depending on which vaccine you get.
And how old your dog is. Okay. All right, where was I? Still doing, you know, I'll tell you what, I'm still doing a lot of paperwork for the, the tire grant, the two thousand dollar tire grant and the eighty-eight thousand dollar DNR trust fund. We got, actually had to record some deeds and waiting for that to come through and other, other things like that. But we'll get there and get that money back to us. The Water Department's installing the new meters. I haven't talked to them today to see what they did, but I think they got about five, six hundred meters installed right now and we did have a glitch in, in the billing or the software as far as billing and getting the bills out, but I believe that was taken care of or is being taken care of the
It was taken care of.
It was taken care of. Thank you, Chrissy. The file format had to be tuned up.
I believe John said this morning that most of the Bird streets are done?
Yep, yeah, most of the Birds, we want, they're actually thinking they'll have all that, that whole district done by end of October. So I'm not sure what is that district to? I don't, I don't know. Whatever the district is over there. If you got your water bill the past two days, your area will be done by October, hopefully. All right, moving right along. The DDA will be approving, we have a meeting Wednesday night, we put out, are receiving demo bids for the property, the house they bought next to the fishing pier. And I think we received five bids for, for the demo and they'll be awarding that with a little bit of luck. And I've been, having to actually talked with the neighbor twice this past week about type of fence or greenbelt they want to see between the property and we'll be working with them along with there.
Excuse me, Artie.
Yeah.
We're going to involve the planning committee?
Oh, yeah, 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 we'll have, we'll get permits and the whole, whole thing.
Well, for, for review and in a public hearing?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. Nothing's gonna, well, we're gonna tear the house, I'm not gonna even entertain the fence until we get the house down.
Sure.
And we'll, we'll know more as far as the timing with that. And I was actually there, I walked out on the dock. I think it was Friday. And there was a guy on the, the fishing pier and he caught a sixty inch sturgeon.
Oh, really?
Off, off, off the fishing pier. I got, I took some pictures of it and brought it in and got it up and, you know, measured it and put it back in the water. I was wondering, I was, you better do the right thing. He's gonna be in trouble. But it was, it was pretty cool. It's one of those, they actually catch fish on our fishing pier.
Oh, yeah, I caught a lot of fish out there.
Exactly, so that was exciting. Okay, um, let's see. The light on the top of the Colony Tower, I noticed was fixed.
Yes, I noticed that too.
And I've had some conversations, starting conversations. We have that forty thousand dollar grant to fix the bike path and trying to get that rolling as far as the scope of it and what we're gonna do. Forty grand, I know that's a lot of money, but it's, for a project like that, I don't know how far it will go. We're questioning, do we want to build it up where it was underwater? And if so, how far, in fact, there's one part that was underwater, there's a big depression. I mean, it, it big sinkhole in it. We have a few of those in there, so we're gonna
Let's just put an elevated, elevated bridge all over.
Well, that's what, that's what I thought for, it was about two hundred feet that was underwater. Basically build a dock, sit it on top of it. So that's a couple of things I'll be looking at here in the next week or two. Get that rolling. Working on quotes for the Pearl Beach Fishing Pier sign and our interest welcome to Clay Township sign. I've been talking to Ira about coming up with our, our plan to take care of our sewer interceptor, which I'm sure Anthony will have some data on that too. I mean, not for tonight, but don't want to scare you there. And the Scarecrow Festival is scheduled for October twenty-four. I had some talks, if this was really a smart thing to do, or we're looking at with the COVID stuff, we're looking at all the individual activities and I, I'm, I'm thinking face painting, definitely not. Is, you know, how do you paint a kid's face with a mask on? And I've been consulted, my fiance and and she said she had a issue where a kid had pink eye and herself and five, six other kids got, got pink eye from a face painting party, so. Thinking that's not, because she paints faces too. That's not, that shouldn't be an option, but we're, we're gonna curtail a couple of the activities that we can't do social distancing. So we're, we're looking at that right now. Want to remind everyone to extend it, the window for, to fill out your census form to the end of October. It's very important you do that, get counted, so we get our proper monies for our federal, state and counties functions too. And it's just not us. It's for schools, it's for programs like Head Start. It's, it's a whole plethora of stuff. It's, it's really important to get counted and it, you know, it takes seven minutes to do online if you go to census2020.gov. And I did want to recognize for her hard work, congratulations to Chrissy, our treasurer, for, I got, we got a letter, for achievement of the APT Certified Public Funds Investment Manager Certification. Recognition your commitment to achieve this professional achievement. And I didn't see the plaque. Did you get a plaque? And the nationally recognized certificate is a testament to your commitment to gain greater understanding of the knowledge to better manage investments on the behalf of your community and clients. We trust the Township of Clay will take great pride in the dedication you displayed in earning this designation, so kudos to you, Cindy. Yes.
Now the rates would just go up, that'd be great.
Yeah, yeah, the interest rates, so. All right, that's all I have. So, um, next we have the Fire Chiefs' report.
Good evening. Fire Chiefs' report for September. During the month of September, I attended two meetings. The St. Clair Flats Homeowners Association over on the island and also the Fire Chiefs, St. Clair County Fire Chiefs Association. The Fire Department participated in two parades in the month of September, the Pete Henkel Boat Parade, which was a good parade, and also the Harsons Island Lions Club Parade, which was a little small, but I think everybody had fun, so. The boy, the guys are working on the trailers, making sure that they're doing some preventive maintenance on those. Replace the bunks, tires, making sure the lights work ready for, if we have to tow them and then pulling them out of the water and if we gotta take them someplace. We've been doing our weekly football standbys for the high school and we also do standbys on the weekends for taffle. We did a couple of games, a couple of weekends for those. I would like to also thank the men and women of the Fire Department for an outstanding job during the COVID nineteen pandemic and the day-to-day operations of the Fire Department. Last month, we responded to two above-average calls and the personnel of the Fire Department performed with the highest integrity and professionalism, so they are really putting their time in and they're really dedicated to the Fire Department.
Kudos to them. It's been busy, hasn't it?
Yes, it has.
Yeah. Okay, any questions for Chief? Okay, thanks, Chief.
Good job.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Chief Rose.
Right now we have public comments. Any public comments? We did have one person that was gonna come and she thought she might be running late, so, oh, well. No public comments? Moving right along. Consent agenda, entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of the board meeting minutes of September twenty-first, check reports, payroll reports, the HPP Hazard Pay Grant notification, CTCL, which is the Center for Tech and Civic Life Grant for the elections, and the, what was it, Association of Public Treasurers notification that we just reviewed for Christie.
Support.
Okay, motion and support. Any discussion or questions?
Yes, I have a question on page fifteen, which is the in-between meetings and check-in forms for in-between meetings. Down at the bottom of the page, there's the third to the bottom.
Cut off.
It says Sandy Kufel, temporary election count. Two hundred fifty-nine dollars and forty-four cents. Can you explain that a little, you know, what, what was she doing with the
She was helping us stuff our three thousand ballots with part of the money that we received from that grant. That's what that grant was for that I just mentioned, from the civic tech and life. It was for hiring temporary help to process our absentee ballots and for hazard pay for our election workers.
Even though she was a trustee?
Well, she didn't come in and volunteer as a trustee. She come in because I offered to hire her for some temporary help.
I was wondering about that.
I guess you can't get any better worthwhile trust than a trustee.
Yeah.
Thanks, Mark.
Stuffing the envelopes. How many absentees went out so far?
About twenty-nine hundred.
We can round it up to three thousand.
I said it's about three thousand.
Wow. Okay.
By the time we received our ballots, we had two days to, two or three days to process them all, stuff them all, address them all, seal them all, posters them all, and get them out in the mail. All the absentee ballots are mailed.
And more coming in every day?
Every day. We had about sixty-five that we mailed out today.
Think anyone's gonna show up at the polls? I will.
I'm starting to wonder.
I'll be right behind you.
Yeah.
I am starting to wonder.
All right. We have motion and support for the consent agenda. Anything else? Any questions on the consent agenda? Hearing none. All in favor of the consent agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion passes. All right, next we have under unfinished business, the review of the COVID three percent hazard pay. I wanted to bring it up because we now know kind of where we're standing with the money that we'd received from the CARES Act. And I proposed, I sent out to via email, but I'm gonna propose that we stop the three percent hazard end of this current pay period, hazard pay. And we did receive oh, where is it? Through the CARES Act, well, agree with it or not agree with it, I mean, we did receive it. And we received about sixteen thousand dollars for hero pay and two hundred seventeen thousand and, and plus for it wasn't a grant, it was actually a payroll replacement money, I guess, that you'd call it, through the CARES Act. And so total, we're at, I don't know, two hundred and thirty-some thousand dollars that we received. I myself would like to I, myself, would like to give a lot of this back to our employees that worked the first lines. And, well, let me put it this way. Our first responders through this, the whole COVID situation, and still going on today, I never heard any one complaint about anything, or even a question about, you know, them doing, if it's safe for them to do their job, or this or that. I mean, they just, they added up, and they, they've been doing a great job. And we, we received this money. I don't think the township should profit from our COVID that we got back from, from the government. We, we, we're going to put some back in our fund budget for a rainy day. But I'd like to give some of this money back to our first responders. And I, I did get a little bit of feedback from our board, what about the Water Department and the, the front office? But basically, my, my proposal was for all the full-time people in the Police Department, and those that work full-time hours, 1,000 hours, I think it was five and a half, six months, in the Fire Department, I want to give them $3,000 apiece. And then it would be less for the part-time guys, depending on their hours. Some I, or there's a few that, you know, they're about like 750 hours. I, I put down a thousand dollars. If they're around 500 to 250, I got $500. And if they worked, you know, like 150 hours or something, I, I got around 250, I think, or something. Anyhow, I, I did a spreadsheet for Fire and, and the Police. And when it's all said and done with, we're still putting back almost $110,000 back in our fund balance that would go to Police and Fire. And I think it would be a good morale boost, and it will pay a lot of dividends going forward to recognize these guys for the work that they've done. And I, I think it would be a good thing for, actually, a lot of reasons. If we wanted to, and the reimbursement was geared for first responders for Fire and, and Police. If we wanted to also recognize the Water, I could see giving them each $1,000, because they, they were off for a while being paid, but they did come back, and they, they had exposure done. I would recognize, it would be eight of them, so that would cost 8,000. And there would be four people in our front office that I would recognize that came in on their time off to do work, not time off, but during the COVID crisis to do work. I know Sheri from assessing, there's Anita, Janice, and Cindy Babish. They came in voluntarily during the whole COVID crisis to make sure that the bills were getting paid and payroll was being done, and processing building permits, and basically keep, keep the township chugging along when everything was locked down. And we could give them each $1,000, too, if the board so, so forth chooses to. So that would be an extra 12,000 from what I emailed out on here. That was my proposal, and I thought I'd bring it out and see what, you know, thoughts and, and if the board would want to do this or something else. So I put it out there.
If we were to approve something like that, when would that payroll go out?
As soon as, you know, we probably, I would say we'd do it next, next paycheck or two.
Is there a possibility that you can give us a breakdown of the money in and the money out, and the potential money that gets going out? That doesn't cover all of it. That just covers the Fire and Police.
Right. Well, it'd be another eight grand for Water, another four grand for the front office.
Okay, but I'd like to see the actual figures of that.
Okay.
You know.
Yeah. Yeah, that's no problem. Fire, as far as, I'm not, I don't have a breakdown for the $16,000 hero pay. I think a lot of it was for Police and some was for Fire. But for the, the payroll replacement, it was 168,000 and change for Police, and 48,000 and change for Fire.
Well, I would make a motion to approve the additional compensation for Fire, Police, administrative, and utility workers, based on spreadsheet provided by the board or supervisor.
Okay? Well?
When you say administration, you don't mean?
No.
No.
You mean partner?
Yes.
I would say the four that I mentioned. The other, what people, to my knowledge, they didn't come in. If they did, it wasn't that much when we were shut down. But, you know, they, the others did.
Can we get some clarification on the four? I mean, I would hate to go through all this and then miss.
Yeah, Cindy Babish in the billing department, Sheri assessing, Anita, and Jan, the deputy clerk. They came in for payroll and, and paid the bills and billing permits. So.
I'm not, I'm glad that you're mentioning them, but even to this point, City of New Baltimore is not even open. You know, these girls did not give us any flack about coming back in.
Right.
You're still supposed to be pushing remote work and not being fully open. That's why they, the Health Department wanted us to put out a sign for essential business only. I'm a little concerned we don't even have our audit done from last year, and that the payroll reimbursement was to help us because we had other costs from this COVID. And we've never, as a board, even looked at the costs that we've incurred from COVID. We don't know what our end of year was from last year. We're not really sure where we are yet this year, because we're still trying to close out last year. I just, in my opinion, think it's a little bit premature.
Well, that's why I said, that's why I asked to begin with what, when, when that compensation was going to be distributed. Okay? You know, so it could be, it could be next month, two months from now, January, I don't know.
Yeah.
But that's something that has to be ironed out.
Well, this plan, I mean, basically, we're giving about 60% back to the employees, and the township's still going to, going, going to be over 100,000 to the plus. I, I know we, we haven't spent that much in PPEs and, and other things. This is money that we would have spent regardless if there was COVID or no COVID. The money for the, the, for the employees was in our budget. It was a budgeted thing. And I just want to.
And, and the motion is based on the spreadsheet that has to be provided yet.
Well, yeah.
When, when, what is the timeframe of this spreadsheet?
I got this last week.
But what, what, so it covered beginning when?
March, I think, what was it? March through present day, last week. That's when, basically, the COVID crisis started.
And that, that spreadsheet can include everything, even what Cindy is asking or talking about, all the other costs involved? That's what we have to see, I mean.
Mr. Supervisor, under item number eight, unfinished business, it says, "Review 3% Hazard Pay." We have gotten this train way off the track.
Well, part of reviewing it is, I want to cancel the 3%, replace it with this.
I would suggest to you that we need a lot more information before we can accept and adopt a resolution on this. This, this is several funds that are coming together, some of which are dedicated funds that maybe can't be spent in other arenas and other departments. I would propose the board get together in some type of a workshop format, and really sit down and review this information, so we can make some educated decisions that support our community and support our Fire Department and our Police Department. But I, I don't believe, my personal opinion, that I have enough information to make good judgment about the information at hand and, and the proposal that's being made.
Okay.
That's my opinion.
What I can do, I'll, I'll get granular with the front office and the Water, you know, what we want to propose with the Water Department. And we can put, I can put line items where the funds will come from. And actually, I was going to bring how we are as far as our, our labor costs so far, but I don't have those numbers available to me yet. So, but like I say, too, you know, we received about 230, and, and with this plan, we're still putting in 110 back into the fund balance. So.
The money's not going anywhere. I mean, but I, I think it would be smart of us to look into, see where we are sitting at budget-wise, to see where we ended up with last fiscal year, before we jumped the gun and make any decisions, just because the check got cashed two days ago.
So I can amend the motion to move forward with review of the issue of additional compensation.
Well.
With review, not approve.
Why don't we postpone it to the next meeting?
I'd like to see a workshop. I like Chris's idea.
And before we do a workshop, we got to get the information, though, too.
Well, that's where that spreadsheet comes in at.
Right.
You know, that's, that's.
I'll, I, I'd be in favor of postponing it, and we'll get some more information together. And. We, yeah. If you want to do a workshop, that's fine, or, or do it at a regular, or board meeting, doesn't matter to me. But, you know, I'm just trying to do this as transparent as possible. And I, I, I really feel strongly about rewarding our, our guys that are, all our employees that helped us through. Because let me tell you, it would have been really easy to make this a lot harder on us.
And I don't think anybody's opposed to it.
No.
It's just a matter of, you know, we're just kind of pulling numbers out of a hat and don't know where we're sitting as far as everything else in the township.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, Christie just got her letter for her investment certification, and she's got to make sure we have something to invest first.
Right.
She's responsible.
Well, I, I, I understand that, and, and, you know, there's, there's a lot of questions. We're, we're not sure exactly how revenue sharing's going to be going forward, and, you know, if there's going to be any effects on, on taxes. From what I'm hearing, the revenue sharing isn't going to be as bad as they initially told us going forward. And, but, but, you know, things change daily. And I, I get that. And, you know, I'm all for being fiscally conservative and responsible. And, but I, I truly think, too, that paying this money out will pay, be huge dividends for us going forward, too. Because, like I say, the people that made it possible for us to get through this crisis, and, and we're still working on it, but, you know, I think we fared a lot better than a lot of other communities, just because how, how our first responders came, added up, and so, and same with a lot of our service groups, and, and people volunteered for, you know, to help out the food pantry, for the food giveaways, and, and all that stuff. And our first responders even helped in that process, too. So, I, 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 yeah, I'm all for doing it smart, but I want to do it as soon as possible, too. So I'll, if, if the board so chooses, we can postpone it, and I'll come back with further information for our next meeting. Well, we got a motion, so we, we, really what we have to do is, is vote no on the motion, and I'll make a motion to postpone it.
Mark has a motion just to move forward with review.
Oh, with review?
He amended his motion.
Okay, that's true.
So are you supporting that, Joan?
Yeah.
Okay. So we have a motion to, to move forward with more information with employee hero pay.
At our next meeting.
Um, okay. So.
Not your motion.
Right, Mark's motion is, is to postpone, right?
Just to move forward with reviewing.
Okay. All in favor of moving forward with the review? That's the motion on the floor.
Can we, can we have a little more discussion on this?
Sure. Because I, I'm going to back this up with another motion to stop the 3%.
Okay, so the 3% is at stake, right? The CARES Act funds are at stake, and I'm still requesting, in front of my board, a workshop on the distribution of these funds. So I see these as three separate entities. So if we'd like to review them, we keep saying that, yes, we're, we're going to postpone it until next meeting. Well, that doesn't do us any good if we're not going to get granular, sit down, roll our sleeves up, and really talk about this. So that's, it doesn't have to be maybe set today, maybe it's something we could, we could talk about in the, the very near future, but I'm all about it. I'd love to sit down with the, the seven of you, and, and perhaps bring in some, some of our command staff and, and really talk about this.
Okay.
I think that's how we remain transparent. And whether or not that gets rolled into one big motion, or if we subdivide that, peel that apple apart, it makes no difference. But I'm seeing three separate things here. I'm seeing something about the Hazard Pay, something about the CARE Act, distribution of the funds, and.
Well, we have a motion. We have a motion right now to go forward with, with, for more information for the CARES Act funds.
Okay.
I can, I can include.
And, and the workshop.
Workshop, I can include workshop in that. So depending workshop review.
Are you at workshop?
Would it be too bold to perhaps have a date, pick out a date between now and the next meeting to set up a workshop?
I'll have my calendar, but.
We, we could do that in email? I guess it doesn't have to.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll set something up in the next week or so. I want to get, like I say, we got to get some, a little bit more information.
I strongly support that, absolutely.
Okay. Want to do it for?
Do you read the motion back again?
Want to do it for a week from tonight? Or we, we can do it at 5:00? Or to a date to be announced?
Yeah, next Monday at 5:00 works great for me. I don't know if we can get the whole board to be on the same page, but.
Monday at 5:00?
It's Columbus Day. Are we open? Great. Anybody celebrate?
I don't celebrate Columbus Day, but can we not have Monday?
We're, we're, we're going to postpone the, the CARES compensation hero pay, and set up a workshop meeting to further look at it, October 12th, is it? 5:00 here. Does everyone understand that? Are you good with that, Mark? And Joanne? And Joanne? Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Motion carries. I'd also like to make a motion that we, uh, discontinue the three percent hazard pay.
Support.
I have motion and support.
When is that gonna become effective?
Uh, assume the next payroll. Hard to do it in the midst of like, where are we at now?
Well, today started in the payroll period.
So, end of this payroll period. You have motion and support? Any discussion?
So, the work they worked this week, they get the hazard pay or they do not? For the next two weeks, this week and next week, is hazard pay or not?
I would say no.
So you want to discontinue as of Sunday?
Yes.
I don't, I don't like.
October.
You don't like that?
I don't like that either.
I think we should continue it until.
Till we have. Till we have resolution.
What we're doing.
Till CARES Act.
Well, the hazard pay reimbursement that we did receive was, I believe through July. We also have an application out that they were supposed to review, um, for the difference of what we've paid out to our employees up to a thousand dollars to each of them that we have not received any notification on. So they could notify us tomorrow and say, yep, you were approved for your advanced request. So whatever employees haven't received up to a thousand dollars, you have until, it was September thirtieth and now I believe it's October thirtieth to pay them off. So potentially between what they've already paid us and what they haven't paid us, those applications received as of nine nine and I think I submitted ours in July or August. Majority of it has been reimbursed. I just don't have an exact date.
So how does that correlate with extending the cancellation of the three percent?
Well, I'm just letting the board know like what we have expended from the township, the majority of it, we've been reimbursed. So it's not like we're, we've been paying them since March out of our pocket. We have been reimbursed for the majority of that. So you have a motion to discontinue the hazard pay as of October fourth. Did anybody support that?
Yes.
Me, Christie.
I mean, we could, we could go another two weeks with it to, uh, what would that be? The eighteenth? October eighteenth? And by then we should know where we're at, um, with, um, from our workshop.
Yeah, we can extend that to Sunday, October eighteenth.
Okay. I'll amend my motion that will, uh, will cease with three percent hazard pay as of October eighteenth. Do you have motion and support? Any more discussion? Very done. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Yes.
Yes.
Two, two opposed, okay. All right, continue on. New business. Uh, we have a update for our Saw Grant firm with Project Control PCE, a discussion. I think Anthony's here. And, um, how we doing, Anthony? Good. Yeah, I didn't make copies for everybody. I got the, I got a chance to read it on my, uh, before.
So, uh, I planned to come quarterly and, and give you updates, but, uh, some things came up, I guess, and, uh, but we carried on, yeah, we carried on, uh, with the, the items that, um, had to be done because they're time sensitive. So we tried to, um, to, to stay focused on that so that we maintain our, uh, schedule for completion within the Saw Grant deadline. They didn't really make any, um, any indication of any extensions, even on other communities that are closer to their deadlines. So, uh, we just kept going and, uh, and that, that kept us on target. So, um, the three areas, and I have this table, so it's probably the best, uh, the best reference is to just look at that table on the first page. The Saw Grant is broken down into, into categories. And, um, the three categories that we, that we had to spend time on right away were the inventory, the cleaning and televising, and the metering and modeling. And that's because, um, the inventory, um, is the, the, the foundation of our asset management program. Um, when we say inventory, it means we're going out and surveying, um, sanitary structures. Those structures are our assets. By, by surveying them, they create a geographic point, which is builds our geographic information system, our GIS system. The GIS system is then, uh, that, those shape files, as they're called, are, are input into the asset management program. And then we start putting all the data per asset. We have a, we have an actual destination for that information to go. So we don't have that set up first and we have, we really don't have any place to, to put all the information that we're gathering. So, um, that was really the first thing that we did. The other, the other reason for the inventory being important is, um, we needed to create a, um, unique ID number for every asset that we carry on through all our, our other works. So we're not calling the same asset, uh, multiple different, uh, numbering systems. So, you know, going in, the township had um, maybe about three quarters of their assets within one numbering system. But then, you know, as the township grows, um, and they'll put a sewer extension out, they'll start with one again. So sewer manhole one, two, three. As they do an extension, it's, it's back to the one, two, three, four. So then you have multiples of those that are all over the township. So we had to create a numbering system that every, every asset got its own number. So that when we then come in in camera and clean in camera, we are going from, uh, manhole number fifty-six to manhole number fifty-seven. That doesn't ever get repeated. So, um, so that was important, um, to do right away. Then the, uh, cleaning and televising is a very time consuming process. It also, um, the cleaning aspect of it has a lot of work that's, that's somewhat unknown. Um, we hired a cleaning company that, um, charged only by linear footage, no matter how much material was in the pipe. So they kind of had to, uh, take that risk on themselves if there was a lot of material. And in some cases, there was. Um, so they, they pushed on through. I, eh, they get some compensation for that extra time if they're, if they've got to go to the landfill and dump. So in a way, they, they do get some compensation, but, um, that kept our costs controlled so that we're not just leaving an open, an open door, um, to the cleaning that's needed. Uh, we cleaned, we cleaned the, we cleaned the sewer. Um, I'd say we're probably in the, at ninety percent done um, with the system. We only have, uh, left the, um, we're, they were on Anchor Bay Drive completing that now. And they've done all the bird aisles. They've done everything on the north end of town, uh, on the border with Ira. Um, they've done all the, all these streets around, uh, along Taft, all the way up to the high school. All that's done. Um, there's a line that runs along the water that needs to be done. And then, um, the Greenwood side, so the north, the north end on the other side of Algenack. That's all that's left.
Do they do the Forest Main or no?
No, so the Forest Main doesn't, we don't, we don't clean it in the same, yeah, it doesn't get televised in the same way. Just gravity sewer.
Yep.
Um, so the Forest Main's, um, there is some ways of cleaning them. Uh, and, and, but televising them is almost nearly impossible. Um, usually what they'll do is they'll have something called a smart pig that goes through. We're gonna see what, if we have funds, you know, for that kind of thing. But I think, um, our next approach is in the condition assessment. So we'll be moving into, into our big structures that have the most cost associated with them next. I need to reserve some budget, like you mentioned earlier, um, for the township's, uh, portion of the interceptor uh, cleaning and tel-, well, I think I just televised, right? No cleaning. Um, so that needs to just get pinned down and then I make sure that, uh, if it's been paid for, we're, we're putting that in our, in our upcoming draws. Uh, we actually have a draw ready to go, so that's gonna get put out here in the month of October. Basically what you're seeing in DR one, draw one, that was paid by the state. DR two, that is what's going out now this month. And then, um, it'll start to slow down then as we move into the winter here, the holidays and the winter. There's a lot less we can do. Definitely, there's not much cleaning and televising we can do. But we'll be processing all that data. So that's when we take the time to go through. So once we've inspected everything, um, now we gotta go through each inspection report, looking at those defects. It goes through a coding system and then we assign repair, like a, a standardized repair and there's several types. We've created a, a template in, at PCE to do that, to process NASCO PACP reports and bring it into a Excel file that has repair types and costs. So that then immediately at the bottom of that, we have our capital improvement, uh, plan. So that has numbers associated. So, um, eh, that is what we'll be doing in the winter time. Beyond that, the other important item and category that needed to be addressed was metering and modeling. We need to have our flow monitoring system in place for at least twelve months. Um, because we have to monitor that whole twelve month period from, from end to end, you know, all four seasons. And even a little bit more than that, because we need to kind of overlap a little bit to make sure that everything is, is not just a one-off. And the longer we have flow monitoring, the better. That's why the approach we took was that the township owns the flow meters instead of renting them. And they can stay there for, we'll, in our grants that are in their third year, we're still taking readings every month. So, um, you know, you'll get at least twelve months, but likely more than that, but maybe double that.
Remember, we had the choice of renting or, or buying those meters when we bought them.
Yeah, and you know, if you have a month that was a weird month, then that's not gonna be indicative of, of, of your whole period. So, and moving forward. So, um, the flow meters are in, they're all working. It's actually the best installations I've had to date. So, um, a lot of times you'll get one or two that are just troublesome locations. Um, I didn't have anything like that, uh, here. So, um, those are all running and we're, we're monitoring them. The winter period is the period when we would expect the least amount of flows. That's when we're trying to so, pin down our base sanitary flow. So we're moving into the winter period with all our meters running perfectly. So, um, once we've got that, then we'll start, as we have a spring, you know, wet season, we'll start to see how the infiltration and inflow really affects us. Uh, right now, we're getting some ground in I and I. Um, then when we see the rain events, we'll get to see what happens when we have that rain event on top of it. So, so that's the, the main things, um, that we spend our time on. Moving forward, uh, so at this point in time, uh, we're forty-five percent, uh, complete. I'd say that from the fieldwork cost standpoint, I think we're, we're ahead of that. So we're probably farther along than forty-five percent. We're probably in the sixty percent range in terms of, uh, volume of work needs to be done. So, um, it's sort of, but like I I mentioned or, or made it, made it clear in the beginning, the, the last year, there's not a lot of costs. Cause it's all this data then being interpreted in the office. Um, the first year is probably the heaviest, the second year is, is the second heaviest and then you have, um, maybe about ten percent left in the, in the final year, ten, fifteen percent left. That you're, you're working on. So, uh, moving forward on the second page, I indicated four different major areas to move forward with, um, condition assessment category. Uh, the majority of the funds are still there. Those are to be used to assess, primarily to assess our sanitary, uh, lift stations, our pump stations. We have eleven of them. They're under the township's, uh, responsibility. I always have gone and done a, um, NASCO MACP, which is, uh, a certified inspection on them that we, um, that we would use a scanner for. So we don't enter the, um, the wet well structures ourselves. We, we drop a scanner in, it scans everything and then we can take that back to the office and spend as much time as we want, you know, virtually in the wet well, uh, looking at all cracks and associated features that are, um, evidence of problems. Those can be, you know, the, if we can reassess and reassign life expectancies to those wet wells, that's huge because the age of them now would indicate they should have, they should have the replacement cost in our budget. So what we want to try to do is to say, no, that's, that's just age profiling. We want to look at the actual condition assessment and then, um, and then assign a, a, a new future life expectancy, which is based on the NASCO standard. So it's, it's all, um, standardized. So that's, um, that's the, the one aspect then, uh, and I can kind of touch on that in the rate structure too, because they tie together. Um, I think I mentioned about the metering and modeling. So the remaining funds will be spent, um, you know, doing the data acquisition and processing. And that's a big part of our final report. The inventory, asset management and GIS software, um, we still have some surveying left to do. Not, not much. It's just ancillary to the, to the, to create shape files for our big asset management, uh, program. So that way all our municipal utilities can be in there. Um, and now the, the destination for that is an asset management software. So that's what we need to decide on, um, which one we're gonna go with. Uh, right now, most of the neighboring townships are using a program called Silversmith. There's one, I have one community in East China that's using Empower, which is both those companies, surprisingly are Michigan companies. So, um, they, they basically sprung out of this five or six, four or five years of Saw Grants. Um, and you know, very good quality software companies, local software companies that, uh, have a good product. So, so we'll be deciding on, on which one the township will, will go with. It'll probably involve some uh, demonstrations from those software providers. The other thing will be, um, uh, there is no, uh, need for, for a GIS, uh, software cost. More and more, uh, communities, and I've attended a lot of SEMCOG GIS, uh, conferences. And the advice I got from many of those, uh, those other developers was, um, the, it's à la carte a lot of times with, uh, the main ArcGIS software. And if you're not really doing it for, in a planning phase, and if it's just a review type thing, there are free softwares. Um, in Europe, they've spearheaded a lot of free softwares. QGIS is the one that I've used in the neighboring communities and it got me all the way through, um, where I needed to be. So it didn't cost the township a penny. We still have as many seats as we want to open it and review it and brings it right into the asset management where that software is the interface that you use. That's the one all the operators go to. They log in from their phone. They get to see all those, those same features, but with all the, the information that, um, that asset, it's, it's saved in that software for that asset. So, so that helps as well, cause that, we can put that towards, um, more useful tools. So finally, the rate structure, um, we have a deadline prior to the final deadline, which is the spring of twenty twenty-two to have our rate methodology. And that's where, that's a big part of when I'll be coming back with information is that we'll need to make a decision on, on rates. And what all this grant does is tells us, uh, where we stand relative to the rates and income that we're bringing in. That's where some of these, um, deciding on what softwares are the most important and which aren't. We've had good experiences with rate development softwares. Um, there's a lot of options now out there. The one that I have experience with is Waterworth and, uh, City of New Baltimore is using that one. And, uh, and I think they're quite happy with it. So, uh, maybe also looking at those that helps us to develop our current structure. We input all that in and it will project out forty, fifty years, determining where our cash position is. And my capital improvement plan, which will be hopefully done with by the spring, um, I can input that in. So now it's just, it's not just arbitrary life expectancy numbers, it's actual numbers of our.
Orlies.
Yeah, yeah. And then, like I said, the condition assessment will tie in there because then our structures, our lift station structures will also be in there, what they need actually. Um, because when you first look at it, it's, it's, it's just a replacement cost over fifty years, so divide by fifty, that whole amount. And that's how much you're supposed to be putting away every year. And so that can be overshooting it, you know? Um, when these structures are already forty, fifty years old and they're still, they, many of them still have a lot of life left. So, so that's where. So, that's where, that, that really was positive, I've seen a lot of benefits, and it really helps, because it's a tool that brings us as engineers together with the CPAs and accountants for your township, and usually, we don't, we don't have a good tool that we both can work with and both understand, and so that was something I experienced that was positive.
Hey, Anthony, real quick, on the condition assessment part, do you actually do recommendations to if, say, if there's one area that needs, has too much gas built up?
Mm-hmm.
Or something like that? Is there a recommendation to going forward?
Yes, I think like what you're saying about like, like hydrogen sulfide buildup and things like we saw in the wet wells. So, recommendations moving forward for that, there's protecting the structure, and then there's investigative reasons for the gas buildup. So, we would, we would touch on both, we would try to attack both angles, and, and then see what is the most economical approach. The particular structure that we spent money on, we went with the defense approach, because they didn't really, I mean, we kind of know that there's a lack of oxygen as it comes through the forest, I mean, through the marshes from IRA, and so, that, that already is a rich environment for hydrogen sulfide, so.
Okay, thanks.
I guess now, if there's any questions, I can answer them.
I guess, I guess from a business standpoint, just a very simple question, is there a return on investment?
Yeah, absolutely. The, the rates, the rate study provides the appropriate, the appropriate evidence, if you will, that your, your revenue that you're bringing in is meeting your needs, and so it's that, that level of service that you're required to provide. The return on investment, I mean, by determining where your cash position will be, if you, if you, in your current ways, you're sort of going with what you know, what you can, what you can best guess, but if you can project that, then you can determine that it might, it might be, it might save you money, for example, to fund a utility now with, let's say, a loan, versus to, to wait five, six years when your cash position has dropped way below your target position, and now you're in trouble, so. And then those assets that are now completely useless and need a total replacement, they, they could be saved now with half or a third of the cost, just to upgrade them or, or bring them up to a level that they're at. In other words, you're not letting them deteriorate, and you have the, the financial tools to make that decision. So, yeah, and that way, there's a big return on investment.
I mean, we're looking at 50-year capital replacement or improvement plan, right?
Right, right.
They don't monitor all of those calculations and figures and projected out?
Right, so, when there's a software, the, the CPAs and ourselves, the engineers, will, will go in there, and thus, usually, the software provider will have an advisor that's provided, like that experience I had, they would have somebody that will help us, so we can, we can input, they'll actually input them for us to get us started, and then we can, we have our logins, and we can manipulate them. We usually create a, we'll, we'll copy the model, so the, the original one can stay, and then we'll have like scenarios that we can run, and that, those different scenarios help in making decisions, and I've seen board members get involved as well, that would like to, to run scenarios and, and, and go with that, and the, and the software companies provide that customer support, too, so. It really, I think, it can be whoever is, is interested, and it doesn't take a lot of, of, you know, prerequisite to, to do it, it's pretty user-friendly.
Is that something that's going to be folded into the current financial analysis? Artie?
Yeah.
Or we're going to, or we're going to have to have that job outsourced?
No, I mean, they'll be working with our auditors and, and hand in hand, and the goal is to, is to make sure that we have funds available.
I know what the goal is.
Right.
Want to see how, how it's going to be managed.
Right.
And to see if we make the right decisions going down the road.
Well, that, that's going to enable us to do it, is getting information.
Yeah, the, the first 18 months of the grant, we don't have enough data, so that's the, that's why we're trying to get all that data within the first 18 months, because then that's time-consuming and involves a lot of parties when we're trying to look at what we do, you know, here's what we need, how we, how are we going to achieve that, you know, and that's when you spend that remaining, you know, 18 months doing that. It's actually, we only have, we only have a year, two and a half, or, yeah, two and a half years to do that. The last six months of the grant, you should be already done with that, and now you're just doing a wrap-up of your data. So, so it's really, it's a tight window, it can catch up on, you can get caught up in that quick, so. So, that's why we're trying not to short our time on doing those, those later activities.
Okay. Anyone have any questions for Anthony?
Can we expect something from you late winter or really early spring?
Yeah, absolutely.
After you've had a chance to get through the data?
Yeah, quarterly, I, I like to get back to that quarterly, you know, as long as it's as is, I, and you guys are doing your meetings, we can go back to the quarterly game.
A ton of scoping, a ton of cammering right now, right? So, you've got all this data that you need to pour through?
Yeah, we're right in the middle of, yep, yep, exactly.
So, we'll get maybe a more physical, actual assessment on your next report?
Yeah.
What you're finding?
Yeah, I do think so. It would be like a preliminary.
It'll be incomplete.
Yeah.
Yeah, I understand.
And the flow monitoring and?
Yeah, we'll have about six month, you know, four to six, four to five months of flow monitoring, too, so.
Great, thank you.
All right, thanks a lot, Anthony. Thanks for coming in. And next on the agenda, we have engagement letter for Northland Securities, as I've been talking to the board about researching the possibility of, of taking care of our OPEB pension liability through a bond, if it makes sense to do that, and Bill Roche, as, we've used him a couple of times before, he's actually a lot cheaper than the old Stoddard, who was Stoddard something, something, something out of Ann Arbor. In fact, they're not in business anymore, and my experience is, he's very reasonable. Basically, he'll, he'll do the, a study if it makes sense to, to do the bond out for, for the MERS and basically the OPEB, and reliability, and set it up and, and initiate it and, and sell the bonds, if that's, if that's how it seems goes forward, and his, his fee is going to be about $6,000, and if we don't do anything, we don't do the bond or anything, there's no cost to us, which he basically says the bottom of page 24 of the site, or page two of the letter. And he's, they're basically, they, they, they just swallow whatever money they spent in, in doing all the research. He has been doing a lot of, of the investigation already, and, and getting the numbers, and he goes, oh, my gosh, we didn't do a letter of engagement, he needs to do this, so, that's before you tonight, if we want to possibility bond out our, our OPEB pension liabilities and move forward with this. I'm asking the board to go ahead and sign this.
What's, what's your track record, Christie?
As far as?
You're making investments, right, with the bond?
Well, yeah, I mean, I, I don't know.
So, what's your track record?
They're not making investments with the bond.
They're, they're not making, we are.
Right.
But they would be.
But they're managing it, so.
Yeah, they would manage. Well, we used them on the Colony Water, and that was pretty innovative, how we, we held back the first year before we bought the bond, because we knew a lot of people were going to pay up front, and that saved us, actually, the Colony Water project quite a bit of money. I know that schools use them, and they're happy with them, and we used them on the water, refunding the water bond, which, I mean, we sold that bond at 1.7% interest, which is pretty nice. I really don't understand the, the question, they, for, for us to bond out for the?
Well, after reading this, it appears there's some risk in this.
Well, yeah, because you, you don't know.
So, so who manages that risk? Well, the us or them?
We, we would. I mean, ba- basically, we're, right now, we pay, what we pay for our OPEB liability is a floating target, it goes up and down, it, it's impossible to budget for, it, it depends on how the market goes and, and how our, our, our group changes, which is, this all closed now, so it won't, it won't increase, it will actually decrease as we go forward. I shouldn't say that, it, it's a, it's a, it's a floating target, and.
Who do we currently have doing this?
Nobody, we, we, we're, we're paying for MERS to, to do it, but essentially, what we're going to do is replace this moving target that changes yearly with a fixed-rate bond. And my thinking was, going forward, we usually get, it varies between 6% and 9% return from MERS, what money that we put into MERS. Basically, we would be getting a bond for probably 2, 2 and 1/4% interest, and taking that money and put, giving it to MERS, where we've been getting 6% to 8%. So, in the big scheme, to simplify it, we're, we're basically, hopefully, the, the theory is, we're going to be paying 2, 2 and 1/2% interest, whatever we sell the bond at, and making 7, 8% interest on it going forward. Is that guaranteed 7, 8%? No, but we, we do have a, we would have a guarantee, it will be 2, 2 and 1/4, or whatever we sell the bond for to do that. The, you couldn't do this in the past, the state realized that this is a good thing, typically, for municipalities to do, and they allowed us to, to do this, in fact, they extended the window another year to do this. So, I, I think it's something that we have to research, it'll help out budgetary, because we know exactly what we're going to have to spend a year.
So, we don't have to approve this tonight, then?
No. Well, the engagement.
This is an engagement?
This is an engagement letter to have him do the research, to see if it, if it makes sense for us to do. And like I say, hi- his, his cost is about six grand, if we don't pull the trigger and don't do anything, the township is at no risk whatsoever. But, you know, he wants some kind of, kind of engagement letters, kind of like a, a leasing, a, a agreement to sell a house, you know?
Well, so that he knows that the whole bond, the whole board is behind the potential of bonding it out, instead of just, let's say, you.
Right, and that he's not going to do a lot, bunch of work, and we're going to have somebody else sell, handle the bond transaction.
I understand that.
Yeah, so, it's an engagement letter to, to, to look, you know, to go forward with it, so.
But it's going to cost us 6,000?
If, if we pull the trigger, yeah. Which for a, a bond, a bonding guy, that's, that's.
A bond consultant, right?
Yeah.
That specializes strictly in municipal bonds?
Yep, and he's an independent guy that works for us to shop it out, the best way to do it.
So, he'll be probably working very close with Christie?
Um, yeah, yeah. And I know before with the Colony Water, he worked with Christie and Sherry and, and everything else, he, he, he's a very knowledgeable guy. He's been in our board meetings before, him and the, the council, Tom, so.
I think it's a good idea.
Yeah. So.
I'll make a motion to approve the engagement letter for Northland Securities as the underwriter for the pension OPEB bonds.
Support.
Okay, we have motion and support. Need a roll call vote for, any more discussion?
Anybody else out there other than Northland?
Yeah, there, there's some of them, but like I say, I, I think, I've used him before, and he's very reasonable, he knows our, our township, he knows our, our.
What was that you used him on?
Uh, for the water refunding bonds and the Colony Water project, twice.
Okay.
So, any more discussion? Roll a call vote, please.
Christie Hilton?
Yes.
Artie Brison?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Mark Rashard?
Yes.
Joanne Sherkin?
Sandy Kufal?
Yes.
Crystal Reagan?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries, thank you. Next, we have a police vehicle purchase. And as you see, we have, we budgeted for two, to, for this year. Any idea when we get these?
Actually, it's supposed to be this month, I haven't heard anything yet, but it's hard to say with the COVID and that, same thing with Ford and everybody else, everything's kind of up in the air, but hopefully this month.
Okay, and these are the same as we've been getting the Ford Explorers, right?
Ford Explorer, however, these are not the police package, because these are going to be admin replacing the Chargers that we have right now, so actually, we're getting these, eh, about over $10,000 cheaper, so, by going this route.
Yeah.
This is through the Macomb County bid, which is the process we always use.
So, they're both 4x4s?
Yep, yes. Now, that's one thing that we wanted to make sure of after driving these Chargers around wintertime.
They're horrible.
I was all set to get a hell, a hellfire, whatever that is.
That'd be fun in the summer.
Yeah, $28,600 for a brand-new Ford Explorer, that's a heck of a deal.
Yeah.
It is, for sure. Another eight grand for outfitting both of them?
Yes, and, and that's what we budgeted for, I don't know if it'll be that, but obviously, we do everything ourselves, so, I mean, it's, every bit of that's going to just be materials or whatever's being put in the vehicles, so.
What do we do with the Chargers, chief?
They will go for bid, and we will sell them.
And the funds go back in your balance?
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah, and, you know, that's kind of up in the air right now, too, I've talked to some other people, a lot of that's being done online right now, so I'm trying to figure out the best way of doing that, because we got a couple other vehicles that we want to already get out, but because of COVID, they shut everything down. We always use Motor City Auto Auction, which we've, we've done really well with them, but that hasn't been molten back up because of COVID.
You have a kind of expected value on those?
You know, it, it's, it's hard to say.
How many miles are on them?
Oh, jeez.
30, 40?
Uh, I think one's got 30-some-odd thousand miles on it, and the other one has 60-something? About 70-something thousand? The only problem is, these, these Dodges, everything breaks down on them pretty quick, unfortunately, and especially the year that these are, the 2014s, there was a lot of bugs in those cars, so we have a lot of electrical problems and factory problems with these cars, even with the low miles on them.
Unfortunately, they're driven pretty hard, you don't have time for them to heat up when you're going on a call.
Right.
Probably got more hours on it than.
Yeah, definitely more hours than miles on them, for sure, I mean.
When those are purchased, were they purchased with police specs as far as suspension or anything else?
Those are police packages, yes. Police package, but only two-wheel drive, rear-wheel drive, so, but they are, yeah, they are the police interceptor, so, usually, we do a little bit better because of that on the resale end of it, so.
I actually have one, 1957 police interceptor.
Someone wants a hot rod, that thing hauled.
Yeah, these, so, these have the Hemi in them, they, they move pretty good, that's for sure, but it's, it's, the problem with here is the wintertime. Wintertime is just, it's, you can't even move in them. I can't tell you how many times I've had to get pushed out of my driveway.
I'll make a motion for the police department to purchase two new 2021 Ford Explorers to replace the Dodge Chargers for the amount of $57,316 from line 207970.
Support.
Okay, motion and support, any more discussion? Here you go, now roll call vote.
Artie Brison?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Cindy Valentine, yes. Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Sandy Kufel?
Yes.
Crystal Reagan?
Yes.
Christie Hilton?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Next, we have a policeman vehicle equipment purchase for, to outfit these two new cars for a total of $8,000.
And like I say, that, that is us purchasing all wiring, necessary equipment, lighting, everything that goes in them, so.
And they do the work themselves in-house. If we outsourced it, we'd be paying a lot more than the 8,000.
Well, the nice thing is with this is we can get a wholesale price instead of paying somebody else that's marking it up before they install it in our car. So we get a better price as far as the equipment goes to.
I'll also make the motion for the vehicle equipment for the 2021 Ford Explorers not to exceed $8,000 from line 207, 799, 01.
Support.
Okay, motion and support. Any discussion on that? All in favor of the $8,000 vehicle equipment expenditure from line 207, 799, 01, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Okay, next, we have a police taser third installment.
This is the five-year contract that we entered into in 2018 for the taser program. So far, it's been pretty good to us. Also with the program, this gives us the training cartridges and such that we need. So that can get quite pricey in itself. Any replacement cartridges we get within this as well. And the problem is the tasers are just absolutely so expensive. And so far, this agreement and the five-year plan has worked out pretty well for us.
So do you have to test these tasers mainly on new full-time dispatchers?
Oh, that's already been done.
Okay. Just once. He makes it, he's in. Just ask me how, how, how the testing part goes. All right, uh, entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the police department to issue their taser third installment of $9,618 from line 207, 970.
Support. Okay, motion and support. Any more discussion other than the testing of the tasers? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Oh, look at, we got a new victim. Uh, we have on the agenda to elevate to full-time dispatcher Dale Williams.
All right, well, Dale's been on with us now for at least a few months now. When did you start, Dale? In, in July.
Come on, Dale.
And we have since had a full-time position open with the retirement of Pat Pecorni. Wanted to see how Dale fared with it and how well he liked it. And I can say he's done a fantastic job since he's been in there. He scored very well on his EMD training. We made it right through his field training process with it. And everybody's been real happy with him. And honestly, he, he's done a great job as far as excelling right through it. And he is on his own now, which is fantastic for the amount of time he's been here. And he's been doing great. And so I sat him down, talked to him, asked if he'd be interested to stick around full-time with this and see what happens and whatever fruitfulness comes in the future.
And you're local, right, Dale?
Yes.
So he knows the area.
Yeah, we're just getting him inclined with the island a little better because you know all that goes.
Yeah.
That can be a little tricky.
Don't send the car down the Baltimore Highway.
Yeah.
It happens.
How long you not here? How long you been living in Clay?
Uh, I live in Oregon, okay.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, he's a muskrat.
You're pretty good.
Okay.
Hey Dale, where do you see yourself in five years?
Uh, I've been through Macomb Community College for criminal justice.
Uh huh.
I actually have to do my academy to receive my degree for criminal justice.
Uh huh.
I'd like to advance here with the township in the next five years.
Within the department?
Yes.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
And with the, as we know, not a lot of people jumping to get into this business right now. And my personal opinion is, once we've got good employees and we know they're good employees, I'd rather invest in those people.
Yep.
And so that's kind of our plan going forward.
Hundred percent.
I'll make a motion to elevate dispatcher Dale Williams to full-time status.
Support. Okay, motion and support. Any more questions for Dale or anybody else? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Congratulations, Dale.
Congratulations.
Welcome aboard. Good luck with that taser testing. All right, next, we have a Resolution 2020D Special Assessment Bull Regard Drive for private road maintenance.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 202020D Special Assessment Bull Regard Drive Private Road Maintenance.
This Resolution four?
Number four?
Yep, Resolution number four.
Support. Okay, motion support. And both of these have got lots of overwhelming supportive, for the community support for these road maintenance. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Sandy Kufel?
Yes.
Crystal Reagan?
Yes.
Christie Hilton, yes. Arty Bryson?
Yes, motion pass. Next, we have Resolution 202021D Special Assessment for Breckner's Island Private Road Maintenance. D Resolution number four.
I'll also make a motion to approve Resolution 202021D Special Assessment for Breckner's Island Private Road Maintenance Resolution number four. Support.
Okay, motion and support. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Sandy Kufel?
Yes.
Crystal Reagan?
Yes.
Christie Hilton?
Yes.
Arty Bryson?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes.
Okay, that's it for our new business on, on the agenda. Next, we have board member comments. Cindy Valentine?
Just as I mentioned before, we were able to get all almost 3,000 absentee ballots out. So if you were applying for one, it should be in your mailbox if you haven't received it yet. We ask that you return the absent voter ballots to our drop boxes. We have two, one on the edge of the driveway you can drive up to and one in front of the main entranceway doors on the sidewalk. So you have two options to return them. Or you can mail them, but we'd prefer you drop them off if you can.
Okay, Mark?
And get the census out.
Yep.
Planning Commission, we had a public hearing on 1900 South Channel for an addition above a garage. That's been approved. Waterfront fences, that was a public hearing as well. No resolution. The item has been postponed pending further investigation based on public comments. The back road, Rosemarina site plan, the reapplication, I believe that has been withdrawn. And I'd like to congratulate, congratulate Dale Williams as a new, our full-time dispatcher. Thank you.
Thanks.
Joanne?
Yes, I too would like to welcome Dale to our, as a full-time dispatcher. And I also welcome Arty back.
Oh, thank you.
As the vice of his vacation. And good news, my driveway is almost dry.
Amazing what a few inches does.
We have a ZBA meeting this month, but I don't know what it's about yet. We'll have the tactics out ready this week sometime, so let's all have.
Okay. Thank you, Sandy?
I also want to extend some congratulations to Dale. Thanks for sticking out, sticking with us. Can't wait for the next five years. Board packet looks great. We got page numbers and nothing cut off. And so good job getting that together and congratulations, Christie.
Thanks.
It is now early October. The deer will be getting into their breeding season. The bow hunters will be chasing those deer. Please do not veer for deer. Take your medicine, repair a vehicle. We're more concerned about you than the vehicle. Do not veer for deer.
There's a lot of them around too, especially on House of Vile.
They're abundant.
There's a lot.
I'm trying my best. Population control specialist.
Good luck with that and turkey. And turkeys. Oh, yeah. Chrissy?
I just want to say congratulations on full-time to our dispatcher.
Oh, good. Uh, yes, I'll reiterate the census. It's important if you stand up and be counted, it doesn't take that long to do it online. Census2020.gov. And welcome aboard Dale and congratulations Cindy. I saw, it's a lot of, a lot of good reading for that, I'm sure. You probably fell asleep with your book a few times.
No, I did not fall asleep. I was too afraid to fall asleep.
Too afraid. But yes, congratulations. I'm a big opponent and fan of training. And other than that, everyone stay safe and be smart. And it's getting weird with this COVID stuff. You know, the executive order's been rescinded, or not rescinded, but unconstitutional. And let's just be smart and manage this thing. Everybody knows what should be done and who's at risk and who isn't by now. Just be smart and management and, and have patience. Things still are taking a long time to get stuff done and try building the house with materials and the price of wood. Have you guys seen the price of wood lately?
Yes.
OMG, I bought eight 2x4s treated, 12 footers, eight-foot 2x4 and a eight-foot 2x12. $148 for 10 sticks of wood. So, hey, it is what it is. So one more, one more.
Motion to adjourn.
Support. Okay, everyone be safe and have fun. Thanks for coming.